To for view. Thank you for the board.
Thank you. Actually, all four of these are all connected to each other. I know we do this every year. We come before the board when we replace some of our patrol cars. So as you see, the first one of the first request is for the replacement of the actual vehicles. This year, our rotation is calling for three vehicles to be replaced. This is through our approved capital budget projects from this fiscal year. Three vehicles, those vehicles all are at or above 100,000 miles, which is typically the tipping point for us with the vehicles. As I think we've talked about this before, it's not only the mileage on the vehicles, but the runtime. Unlike, you know, our personal cars where we get in the car and drive from point A to point B, shut the car off. These cruisers run a lot and even public works will tell you the runtime is what kind of is the what beats up the engines and components of these cars because they run for so long, above and beyond the mileage. So those three cars are at their their end of life, at least for a patrol cruiser. We do those cars are made available to any any other town departments, as you know, if they need them and if they are serviceable to to transfer to another department, any of the cars that we switch out of. Included in the request is also the outfit. The outfit is equipment and there's a number of items in that outfit list, things that go into that cruiser that need to be mounted by professionals to make that cruiser, you know, all the all the components that we need to be up and running as a patrol cruiser, including our gun vault mounts for our computers and radios and things like that. The third request is also part of the outfit. And it's the purchase of the radar units for two of those vehicles because we have one, we're going to be able to switch from one vehicle to another. But two new radar units to go into these cars and those radar units. They they last for a pretty long time, but we've been in the process now of replacing a lot of much older radar units as they become unserviceable. So right now we need to replace two of those of the three cars that were upfitting. And the fourth request is the in-car cameras. It's going to be three brand new cameras. Two of those cars currently do not have cameras in them. So and one of them is is old that we have to replace because it's beyond its lifespan. And as you know, with the police accountability bill, the in-car cameras are required now for all marked patrol vehicles. So all of our vehicles, whether whether patrol on a construction job, anywhere where those cars are, they are required to have a in-car camera as well as the officer having a body camera. So those are the four requests. If there's any questions in regard to those, I'd be happy to answer those.
But are those cameras the license plate readers too, or just?
No, those the cameras are in-car cameras only. They are not license plate readers, but they are synced with our body cameras. So it's a whole integrated system.
And let's put a question, which I probably should have caught earlier. There was an option for a hybrid.
Yes.
And is there a reason you didn't take the option with the hybrid? Because we have been stressing wherever possible to move to electric or hybrid vehicles.
Yeah, I think the pandemic is was the same thing last year with the pandemic. Trying to get those hybrids are almost impossible. Right now they're telling us, you know, perhaps eight or nine months with no guarantee that they could get us all the vehicles we need. So that that certainly puts a little crunch in with the amount of mileage and things in in these cars. We're hoping that perhaps next year, because we do have one of the hybrid, that's our supervisor's car now. And we are hoping that, you know, with supply chains and everything coming back, hopefully soon, that those things can be a little bit more available. But right now they can't guarantee us those cars in a timely fashion.
How is the hybrid working out, at least the supervisor level?
Really well, you know, a good mileage, you know, better than than the traditional cars. Even though each new each new version of these cars come out, the mileage seems to get a little bit better each time. The problem with the mileage is, as I talked about earlier, was is the is the runtime or the idle time, which eats away at that mileage when you're sitting at an accident scene or another scene and that car is just running, you know, going no miles, but but using gas. So that's that's where why our mile why the mileage is 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 lower than you might think.
I don't remember doing. Well, not that we've never done three before, but is this the normal cycle doing three cars?
Typically, we do two to three a year. Last year, I think we did two. This year we have scheduled for three and it really it's it's based on the mileage of the cars. And I think that throughout the years, as I've gone back and looked, they it's been two to three cars a year. A lot of the times too, we have we have some some cars that are not patrol cars, our detectives' cars, the cars for the administration. Those cars also come up at a time that we have to replace those, but we seem to get more we can get more more time out of those cars.
Just just for reference, how many total cars does your department have?
We have we have fourteen patrol cars.
And how many total?
I'm sorry?
How many, including all of the others inside patrol?
Fourteen patrol cars. We have five administrative cars. That would be the chief's car, the deputy chief's car and three detectives. We also have a other specialty vehicles. We have a command post, pickup truck, et cetera.
This is no increase in number of cars?
No, this is this is the the cars that that these will replace will be will be transitioned off the fleet.
Okay, so we need a motion to do all of these?
Yeah, let's 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 I didn't attend a motion to do a call for the requests there in front of us. Really related. I'll make that motion to top section for second. Items related to the three new vehicles. Okay, let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner.
Hi.
And in the room, all those in favor, opposed, staying accused, and very non-motion carries. Thank you very much, chief.
Well, thank you, everybody again, and and we'll be talking to you soon.
Chief, just one thing, assuming that we're all in the in these seats come April, when the referendum hopefully gets passed and there will be another cap of a request. I would I would suggest that we start reaching out to, once it gets, once that budget is passed, I'd suggest we reach out to Changlers or off the state contract and get orders in ahead of time on the hybrid vehicles. We are about to launch an EV readiness program here through sustainable CT. And it's I think it's essential that we we lead the community in terms of the implementation of those vehicles. So we can get a little jumpstart on the lead time next year would be my hope, so.
And I would certainly have that conversation with the the people that supply that car. And and again, they're willing to work with us and I and hopefully that, you know, they they'll be able to get something ahead of time for us on those.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have to jump off. I have another meeting, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item number five, order bed director of operations, Cliff Gernom. Good morning, Cliff. Five dot one is discuss to take possible action to contract with Johnson Controls for HVAC controls commissioning for the Baldwin Middle School.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. So we'll have a couple of commissioning proposals here in front of you, working with the standing building committee. We are commissioning both the HVAC systems for Baldwin and for Melissa Jones. This change order here is for the commissioning for the Baldwin Phase One and Phase Two HVAC project. And it's to have Johnson Controls work with our commissioning agent, Colliers, to perform testing, provide them with any additional information they might need and attend meetings as they go through and and do testing and and follow-ups. So the standing building committee has reviewed this, recommended moving forward with it and awarding the work to Johnson Controls in the amount of $20,530.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it, but I have a question.
Another second, second.
Cliff. When Johnson Controls originally started this project, they don't include in their proposal funds for this after work or or whatever we're calling it?
Commissioning. No, it was not part of the original scope. This is something we've decided to do after we bid the the project out. We ran into a couple of problems, so we felt that bringing in a commissioning agent could help us resolve some issues and look through it to make sure that the systems are installed correctly per the contract documents and per design in the manufacturer's recommendation. So I think you'll be seeing this more often, but you'll see it incorporate into of the projects in the future. So it hasn't been done in the past, but should be or most likely will be done in the future.
I think that if I can interpret, Sandy, you were might have been referring to the Johnson Controls Energy Performance Contract.
Well.
Because this because this HVAC was not part of the original Johnson Controls Energy Performance Contract that we entered into, if I'm not mistaken, Cliff, right?
Correct.
Why was this HVA system not part of that original scope?
This HVAC system was actually in place and underway or under design prior to that project being done. And it was too, we'll call it too heavy of a project to incorporate into the energy performance contract.
Got it.
Well, I really was more questioning Johnson Controls wouldn't anticipate that a commissioning part might happen, but I guess your answer is they didn't because we didn't until afterwards. And so now they're going to charge whatever they're going to charge to work with colleague.
Correct. And that's why you also see a change order coming up for Save More, because it was not in Save More scope either. And they're the contractor for the project. Yep.
In going forward to Sandy's point, should we be asking if this is going to be necessary, including it in the original bid? I mean, if you feel that these systems are getting more and more complicated and going to require this extra effort to to get them up to speed, shouldn't it be part of the original contract?
Yes, we were in the future, moving forward, we're going to start incorporating this into our bid documents. So you will not see these change orders. It will be part or should be part of the initial bid.
Is this considered like a third party?
Yes, it is.
Cliff. I I this came up, something similar just came up once before and and practical purposes, it's it's essentially an owner's agent to verify what's being installed.
Correct.
Their summary. Okay. And how big is the underlying project?
$3 million for Phase One and Two combined.
And and what all is happening there? You're changing the entire HVAC system at Baldwin?
Correct. The entire system was changed. Everything in that whole building is new boilers, cooling tower, all the individual HVAC units, air handling units, fans, yes, top to bottom and controls. So the only thing that wasn't replacing that building was the ductwork going to the individual classrooms.
And and as I gather from the supporting document, these folks are charging for 199 hours worth of work, five, five weeks, basically, so we're working somewhere every forty hours, to just double check what's going in in the first place.
Right, they double check to make sure every little operation's working correctly and it was properly installed. Yep.
Didn't you say that this? Yeah, I'm not, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to wrap my brain around this, how the warranties ultimately that would work. So because I can sort of envision a universe in which Johnson Controls is installing this, right?
Save More does most of the install.
So so they're going to they're going to down the line, somebody's going to look at this and say, well, these people double checked what we did. We're off the hook if there's a problem. Like, how does the warranty language work in these two entities?
Right, so it doesn't affect the warranty if there's any mechanical problems or operational problems. If they find an operational problem, then it goes back to warranty. It kind of helps us string out any problems that we might find in the future that should have been caught now. So it really does help you ensure that any problems or issues are resolved and found within the warranty period, if that makes sense. So it actually helps us in that state.
Okay, and and the warranty language that we get from the manufacturer and the installer potter plates that these people are going to be reviewing the work and that the warranties remain valid despite this extra step of of verification?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, okay. And you've seen that language yourself?
It's just the warranty itself, yes. This does not what I want, how I want to say, it will not invalidate any of the regular warranties. All the warranties will will stay in place.
Okay. Just double checking, because this is a big project and you said it was a multi-part project. Just cause covering all of the parts that they're going to, is there another one coming down the pipe when they do the next phase or something?
This is covering both Phase One and Two for the project, so there would not be another, there is no Phase Three for this building.
And Cliff, what other projects are we contemplating doing commissioning as well that are currently open?
Presently, we're doing commissioning for the Melissa Jones HVAC system.
We've already approved that, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry, what was that?
Did we already approve that?
No, that's underneath your approval requirements. Because it's underneath the 5% or it's under 25,000 or 5% of the cost of the project. So therefore, the standing building committee approved it. I don't believe it's a requirement for you to approve it.
How much was that one?
That was much less. I I'd have to pull it off. I don't have it in front of me, to be honest with you, but it was much less because that project was half the size. So.
I'm still trying to get my brain around 199 hours.
They they have to go through and they check the operation of every single piece of equipment, every valve, make sure it opens and closes properly. It's going the right direction when it's supposed to be, you know, opening, it's opening when it's closing, it's closing. They check the rotation of pumps, motors, make sure they're running at the proper frequencies. So if it's 100%, it's running at, you know, the equivalent of 100% with the frequency, which would be 60 hertz. They go through all those little tiny little details and actually test every little thing. So they work closely with the commissioning agent. The commission agent actually designs the test and then Johnson Controls will actually have to perform the test. And then the contractor's there to verify and kind of oversee that, you know, the mechanical piece of equipment is is functioning. If there's any questions on the mechanical side, then the contractor answers those questions.
And the there's a detailed breakdown of the hours, systems. Bash is on item A. It looks as if the installation checklist quantity is 93 system, 25 major, 68 small. Functional tests, oh, 45, 16 of those for major and 29 are small. And then there's a breakout of the hours below, and then there's an admin tech time as well, administrative time, administrative time addition to tech.
I can appreciate this multi-million dollar project and its costs. I really hope going forward that these kind of costs are included in your inventory. I mean, if the difference is going to be necessity going forward, then it should be part of the cost of the project, you know. I struggle with the fact that somebody installed the product and it's our responsibility to figure out if they get it right. Me that people installing it should have take that responsibility. But if this is the world we live in, at this point in time, the multi-million dollar project, I do want to get it right. But going forward, I want to make sure that, you know, these kinds of things poppin' up later on.
Exactly. It's something we need to do, it should be part of the project. Okay. We have a motion on item one, and that is the commissioning in the amount of $20,530. Yeah, it's already been seconded. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner.
Hi.
And in the room, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, staying accused, and very non-motion carries. Item five dot two, consider take possible action to award the design for Baldwin Kitchen renovation to Antonazi and Associates. Cliff?
Thank you. So this project consists of a complete renovation for the Baldwin Middle School. That kitchen is well past its life expectancy. We've been kind of struggling to keep much of the equipment running, so it's it's time to update and replace the equipment, including the walk-in freezer, the walk-in cooler, the various ovens and stoves, as well as we want to reconfigure the actual operation and how the serving lines present to the kids. So we had hired Antonazi to perform a concept design about a year and a half ago. They did that. We have delayed the project a little bit because of the change in the food service manager, so we had to get the new food service manager on board and we've done that. So we're looking to move forward with the Antonazi there under our on-call bid. What are our lists, I guess you'd call it. So the actual proposal was reviewed by the standing building committee. They recommended to award the work, which consists of full design, construction documents, bidding fees and construction administration in the amount of $46,440 to Antonazi Associates. And this would be coming out of a bond from the fiscal year 1920 that still still has a remaining balance of $828,000.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? I'll move it.
Second.
Per our discussion of our last item, there's quite a list in in this proposal of of fees and services not included. Do you have any estimate of what that list, which I noticed doesn't contain a commissioning occasion? How does the cost for that 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 was compared to the 46,000 dollars that we're talking about?
At this time, we're not expecting to need any of those additional services. This is what's that?
You're going to have permits and, you know.
Well, most of the permits are are provided through the construction provider, not the design provider.
So this list, I mean, I read the above noted fee for professional services do not include the following list six or seven thing. So most of those six or seven things will be on the construction contract?
Most likely, if needed, yes. And some of them are not needed at all. You know, special inspections are not needed. We're not going to go for a lead certification on a kitchen. Things of that nature, permit fees are under the construction person or company. We will not have full-time onsite construction observation. We normally have it so that they make a certain number of construction meetings and weekly construction schedules. So in here, there's about 10 onsite visits. And again, keeping in mind that this project's done over the summer. Our summers consist of anywhere from six to eight weeks' work of open time to do a project, which is relatively short. So our 10 visits, weekly visits are more than enough. And that allows us, even if we run past, you know, the summer into the the fall, to have those weekly visits and meetings as well. So I feel everything is is well covered at this point. We won't do 3D architectural renderings for, again, a kitchen. It's not needed. So I I think this encompasses most of the fees that will be needed for this project. And again, it's going to go into the, and and not that you do commissioning for a kitchen, but normally the commission would be put into the contractual contract, not the architectural contract.
Cliff, the only the two that were more concerned to me that were accepted are the environmental hazardous materials survey or specifications. I would have thought that might have been an architectural responsibility. And then structural engineering. Is there any structural engineering required for this project?
We do not believe that there's any structural engineering engineering needed, based upon the walkthroughs and the work that we've done thus far with the conceptual design. And in regards to the hazard material and specifications, we normally use our own provider for that. So we would provide, we use Mystic Air normally. They come in, they would do any testing through us. They keep all our records and manage most of our projects. So they would develop any needed scope if if there is any hazardous material within the project and they would give that specification to this engineer to put into the bid package itself. So it would not fall underneath the architect.
All right, thank you, Cliff. Any other question?
I have a question. So so this is paid for out of the bond that's specifically for the A and E services. And we'll have about 780,000 left after this. Are there particular projects that you have in mind for the remain remaining 780? Just making sure there's enough in there.
We do have obviously multiple projects coming up. I think the balance is more than sufficient of what we have coming down the pike, so we shouldn't have a problem moving forward with those projects.
Okay, all right. And and just in general, as far as the design of the kitchen, apart from updating everything that's ancient in there, are there any basic changes to the functionality of the kitchen or the way it'll work?
Not so much to, you know, we obviously want to always try to improve if we can on the, you know, operations to make it as easy and function the best we can. That's why we work with kitchen design teams like this. We are going to be moving, you know, where it makes sense. So we we took the cooler and the refrigerator that's actually in the back of the school away from the loading dock and brought it forward. So that, you know, those big pallets of food and everything don't have to get trucked all the way through the school. So we do look at things like that to to really improve on it. So we will be making those changes as we move forward. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion to approve the award to Antonazi Associates for the on-call contract services at 46,440. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner.
Hi.
And in the room, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, staying accused, and very non-motion carries. Item five dot three, discuss to take possible action on a proposal for stadium field.
So after further review, as as we're starting to come to a close with the stadium field project, it was recommended that we add one more set of stairs in front of the bleachers to allow us to get from the top landing down to the lower landing. That that allows, you know, the the parents and spectators to actually come down closer to the field at the end of the game, you know, to be able to interact with with the players. We looked at doing this in the same materials as the other stairwell, which is located to the east section of the field, which actually takes you all the way down to the actual track. This one only takes you from the upper landing to the lower landing. The cost to match in stone, that similar type of stair was about 45, almost $50,000. So we worked with the engineer on the project, KVA, as well as the actual contractor, which was HI Stone. We were able to find a vendor that also works with the town. So between the three of us, we had a contractor come up with design that would work to allow us to get from one landing to the other. The standing building committee reviewed both the design as well as the cost. They thought this was a much more feasible way of of doing it, more prudent to do it this way. So they recommended awarding the work to the Galvin Company in the amount of $22,600. And 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 just so we know, we do have this and another change order coming down for the the project. We will still have a balance for that project of $100,000 on hopeful approval of these two items.
Let's take them one at a time. First one. Is there a motion? Question, uh, Cliff, I I think the obvious question is, um, why weren't these contemplated in the original design and uh bidding documents?
Um, I think it was just an overlook of of uh, you know, the operation of the field. I mean, we look at the field as in inside, but uh when it kind of was brought to our attention about the interacting interaction of of the the players and um uh the spectators, it's just something that wasn't really caught during the design phase, that's all. Otherwise incorporated into the project itself. Yep.
So the alternative would have been if they want, if spectators wanted to get closer to the field, they had stairs on either side, um, right?
Yeah, they all have to go. Actually, there's just one side. The uh, the we'll call the east side has a set of stairs that you could uh come down, uh and it's almost uh in line with the goalposts. We'll call it the east goalpost. Uh, if you wanted to get down from the upper landing to the lower landing on the west side, again, down past the goalpost on that end of the field, the field actually uh uh grades down from one uh from one to the other landing. So you could actually walk around it that way. Uh, outside of that, you have to jump from one landing to the other in the middle of the of the field itself.
All right, so there's a there's a measure of risk mitigation on people jumping uh down. Okay. Now I understand. All right, uh, any further questions?
I I guess I have similar questions to Charles on the last set with these exclusions. Permits or fees are excluded, concrete foundations are excluded. I mean, is this twenty-two thousand the entire cost or are these additional things? The prevailing wages are excluded. I mean, if they're using uh uh, you know, a prevailing wage and this quote doesn't just doesn't include that, I mean, this could significantly increase the number.
Right. So, yeah, none of that is uh applicable and in in this uh, there there is no uh permits. It's it's underneath a um um, or at least no permits are required uh as far as I know. Um. What was your items? Um.
The prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage yet isn't uh because it's again, uh, it's it's a separate, uh, we pulled it out to make it a separate uh piece of the uh a separate project uh versus being the overall project. And then uh, lastly, um, we've already put in a foundation under the expectation that at some point we would have to what we'd like to put in stairs. So um, that's already been taken into consideration. So really, all we're doing is 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 building the stairs and then dropping them in place. Everything else is already set 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 in stone. So we're all set to go.
By H I Stone. All right. So so Cliff, I just want a quick qual- uh qualification on the prevailing wage. The reason they are not uh uh paying prevailing wage on this project is that um, it is below the threshold and it is a separate project from the uh separately contracted project from the original um, bid that went out. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Are you gonna say something?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make an observation. The Standing Building Committee has has already gone over all this. I, in a sense, I feel like we're repeating their work or second guessing their work. I mean, I like to go back and look at their minutes and see what they talked about. I think the timing in this case was such that I we haven't seen those yet. Um, but a- absolutely, if we have questions, we should ask them. But I think we should keep in mind that people with a lot of credentials have already gone through all this.
Thank you, sir. There's no questions, Susan. You're correct, especially in the mechanics of it, but uh I mean, this proposal, the one that we just approved, we're at fifty thousand dollars. And it seems to me last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, we did something about grading and and return and the turf. Related to this issue. Uh, are there gonna be more bits and pieces that we're gonna be faced with? Uh, you know, we have this fifty thousand dollar staircase so far. You know, are are there gonna be more coming, Cliff, or is this getting close to the end of this discussion?
No, this this project, uh, as I mentioned, we we do have the next uh change order that sums up the last of uh the um proposed change orders uh for the actual turf field. Um, and then that's it. This this project will be closed out uh upon approval of that next uh change order.
Well, I'm just gonna make the same note I made earlier in this meeting, that the nickel and diming.
Yep, and and to the soonest point, uh, if you you do go through the minutes of the Standing Building Committee, uh, they did have many of the similar or same questions of, uh, you know, why didn't uh, why wasn't this caught in the pre-design phase or design phase? Uh, you know, you you can't always catch all the operational, um, you know, details. We do the best we can. This is one we missed, unfortunately. Um, you know, it did change the operation, you know, the old field, they could just walk down the hill. We've since changed that because we reconfigured it to have two landings versus the hill. So it's not like we had this problem or situation in the past. This is something new that came out of the construction project. And therefore, w- we realized, uh, you know, after the fact that we created an issue there, and now we have to alleviate it. That's why this uh, the need for these stairs. Hope for that makes sense.
You say, and I can appreciate the detail part in getting to getting to that point. But this particular one just seems like an expansion of the project. I mean, we okay to field and now we're okay in the spectator area. And uh, that's all I I'd like to be cognizant of is that, you know, this does give the appearance of expanding the project beyond uh what we initially thought we were dealing.
I would I would agree with Charles. It is exactly that. Uh, but I think the the rationale is, once we had done the work that we had assumed, or not assumed, but had told people we were gonna do, it became obvious that there were some, there were some holes. And and I think our point has always been, why don't we find, why don't we catch those things? I don't think we're paying architects, we're paying an engineering firm uh to design this. They know the current status and the current layout of everything. And the changes that they propose in the design should contemplate uh some of these things. You're absolutely right.
Well, it it goes to that thing that we are often faced with during budget cycles, the need to have versus nice to have. And uh, you know, here we are tiptoeing into clearly a nice to have. Makes some sense, and you know, I can appreciate the logic of it, but
Yeah, uh, I I would agree that some of these things appear to be nice to have, but in in fact, there is a measure of risk mitigation in this as well. Since we don't have people jumping off tiers, uh, we have to actually provide them a way to get from one tier to the other. So, but again, that should have been contemplated when I made the decision to do the tiers. So, anyway, I think we, uh, uh, to Susan's point, I think we kicked this around uh pretty well. Um, if there are no further questions or comments, uh, let me try your minds. Select woman runner.
Hi.
Uh, those in the room, all in favor? Those who sustain recusals, hearing none, motion carried. Uh, to continue this uh discussion, item eight five dot four. And as of a uh possible change order number number three for the stadium field project. And again, uh, Cliff, just wanna go through those quickly.
Yep, uh, so uh, this change order number three consists of uh five uh proposed change orders. These five proposed change orders were individually looked at by the Standing Building Committee and approved to uh for the work to be uh done and moved forward. Um, when we, and a real quick, I'll just touch on a couple of them. Uh, we raised the manhole, which is in the west uh end of the track. Uh, that manhole wasn't even known to be there until we excavated that end of the uh track, cleared it out. Um, so it uh, due to the new grading, uh, they had to actually raise that manhole to meet the new grades. To ensure that we just didn't bury it further. Uh, that manhole allows access to uh where all the drains come out of the underneath the the field itself into the river. So uh proposed change order number twelve, uh, there was an additional uh concrete uh sidewalk uh where we tore out uh the existing blacktop and replaced it with concrete at concession stand. Uh, there was tripping hazards, elevation issues, uh, the existing um brick uh pad there has started to deteriorate and come apart. So uh, again, for safety issues and concerns, uh, we did that additional work. Uh, P C O thirteen, uh, we had to relocate some utilities that came in conflict with uh the installation of the new wall. Uh, again, uh, we didn't have existing plans of the existing site of where all the utilities were. Uh, so again, we weren't aware that we we had that conflict until we got into the project and we were building the walls. And uh, we found that there were some electrical con- electric electrical conduits and um drainage conduits that had to be uh moved and and relocated to ensure that the uh wall uh could be placed where it needed to go. Um, and then lastly, there was some T and M, or actually second to last, there was time and material based. Uh, most of that was uh us dealing with additional rock ledge. You know, that site is very um rocky. And uh, in order to do the uh proper elevations and stuff around the concession stands, we had actually jackhammer out uh some of the ledge uh to make it all work uh properly. And then lastly, you'd asked about uh in the the prior one about the the pad for the additional stairs. Again, we took that as part of the the main project to make sure that in the future, um, whether it was today, we're, thank you, we appreciate you approving that. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we at some point could put stairs in there because we had realized again uh that it would be needed uh for safety reasons. So uh, this change order uh was recommended by the Standing Building Committee. We moved forward and awarded to H I Stone the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And this again, this wraps up the uh project. Uh, the field should be coming online. Uh, we hope at the end of this week, we did lose last week due to uh the rain. Otherwise, they would have uh done the uh striping of the track last week. Uh, we hope to strike the track uh today and tomorrow, but the field goes up Wednesday, Thursday and the and have this field online. Hopefully before the weekend.
I'll move it, but I have a comment.
And I I'll second and uh if you're first.
Well, it just, you know, here we go again. Uh, you know, I'm sure we paid engineers and architects in the beginning of this project, and now they're telling us that they didn't know there was a manhole. They didn't know there was a utility. How did they think electricity got to that different place? Where do you think the drainage water ran? It just seems it seems like these are the types of things we pay engineers and architects for upfront. And now they're saying, oops, we didn't know. That's your job to know.
And again, that that goes back to whether or not, you know, the town has plans of a site. Uh, if we can't provide them
That drains, they go somewhere.
Correct.
They, what is it? I'm sure they don't just, you know, sit in an office and draw plans. They must have, you know, site walks and things like that to figure it out. It I I just find it uh striking that we pay professionals and then they can come back and say, oops, we didn't know. Well, you know, that's what we're paying them to know.
Uh, I I believe that they do try to do their best uh with the information they have at that time. Again, if somebody buries a manhole, um, whether they should or shouldn't do that at the time of the work. Um, when, you know, we run a project, I try to make sure that if we've come into something that maybe wasn't done properly uh before, that we fix it uh at the time of the project and and not re-bury something that shouldn't have been buried in the first place. Um.
Thanks, but it should have been known. I mean, it just seems to me that
It was a pipe came out.
Cleaning system, you know, ought to know what's in the ground. I mean, I mean, you know, it's not hard to find pipes in the ground.
Right. Well, we knew the pipe it was. We knew where the pipe came out. We did not know that there was a cleanout manhole. That was, you know, I'd say about ten or fifteen feet prior to where it uh daylighted. So, you know, again, it was something that was buried either over time or on purpose, uh, God only knows that we should have access to. Uh, and again, to to correct that situation and make it um, so that in the future, it's not an issue. Uh, again, we we take the steps to to make it, make it work.
Um, you're saying we didn't have the documents to detailing some of those. Those documents should have been put in someplace when that track was built. How long ago was that track built?
So we have the plans uh for, I believe, the track in the field. We don't and and take a look at the the track in the field. So anything outside the perimeter of the track itself was not included in the last renovation project. So although we had the plans uh for the track in the field itself, we didn't have the plans that showed anything out past the track itself. And we did substantial amount of work out past the track. Uh, you know, the the two-tier uh stone wall that was all done in front of the bleachers, uh, and in front of the ticket house. Uh, again, that's outside that perimeter or area that was done when we did the track. Uh, you know, fifteen years ago or whatever it was. Uh, so we couldn't find any plans um that we had with the Board of Ed or researching with the town that showed us what that site consisted of. Um, and again, we just did a ninety-three million dollar renovation of a high school, but that didn't include every anything inside the fence of the of the stadium field. So again, nobody did any work or uh site work or excavation or research inside that during the high school project. And nothing was done outside the track during the last track field renovation. So it's something that hasn't been touched in probably, I'm guessing, thirty years, forty years, maybe, whenever it was originally put in. And nobody could find those those documents.
So so the object us, the object lesson is that we're going to have these documents filed and retained so that uh the future generations don't run into these same kind of problems, right?
So we now have electronic filing, so we keep all our projects and all our documents on a, you know, multiple server with backups. So that uh it, we don't even give the architects and engineers paper anymore. We just shoot them over the file. So yes, we shouldn't have an issue moving forward in the future because now our record keeping is much more um i- is much better, obviously.
So so, Cliff, we're we're putting it through the wringer here a little bit. So I have a a couple of one or two additional sort of comments and then a couple of supporting points for you. Okay? In in instead of, I think the 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 lesson here that what I'm trying to get across and maybe some others is not so much that you gotta explain to us now why these things are happening, but for us to convey to you that it's important to convey some of this stress to the professionals so that, you know, on the front end, these things are getting addressed in a way that we're more productive for all of us. I realize it goes through multiple steps and it's very helpful that standing bu- building is there and going through that process. But we've got responsibility as well. And I guess what we're saying is that's gotta kind of run down to you to convey to these outside folks that we're hiring to to kind of make sure on the front end as much of these things as possible are addressed. Some of the stuff, as I'm understanding it, like for instance, the 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 sidewalk in front of the concession stand for anybody who's been there has always been a problem. I mean, all honesty, that the fact that that wasn't kind of contemplated does surprise me a little bit. I mean, that area was was difficult. Yeah, and it was, you know.
Motive member doing a conversion for youth football.
So these are kind of things that aren't necessarily hidden. Some of, I understand your point about the manhole missing the concrete there or replacing some sort of sort of I don't wanna say haphazardly, but not fully, you know, completely thought out asphalt many, many years ago. Would have seemed to me to be part of what should have been happening on this project from the front end. And it would be a much better thing for the process to have said, listen, we need an extra seven thousand dollars for concrete when this proposal first came through rather than hearing it now. That's our point. The positive thing, and I'm gonna finish off a positive thing for you, although really, I kind of wanna see some of this stress conveyed to the outside folks. And that's my message here. Um, this, these two proposals, a little more than fifty thousand dollars. Everybody should sort of hear is within a bonding budget that's already been passed, that it's for overall this area and these projects. If it had happened within the context, and instead of having a hundred thousand, there was fifty thousand left and these two things had gotten done then, it would have been less so somewhat frustrating. I mean, we wouldn't have been having this extensive discussion. So a long-winded way of saying, maybe a little bit of extra legwork on the front end goes a long way to smoothing out the process.
I I I would agree. There's there's two things that I think I wanna convey. In every project that we uh agree to, when we go through capital project, capital project, the planning always includes contingency. We never ask what the contingency is about, right? So I think we need to, in the future, we need to have that discussion. So I think we need to, in the future, we need to have that discussion. What are the possible uses of contingency? What would trigger the use of it? Clearly, some of this is things that we didn't see, didn't expect to have. But the other piece of this, and I think this is the point that's been raised, is there is a measure of scope creep here, alright? And Cliff even admitted this, the original project was for the turf field and the track. However, the implications to the surrounding area. Were not contemplated to the degree that we are finding acceptable this morning. And I've been, the clearest example of that is a concrete pad or a concrete or concession stand. That was never part of this project, but it somehow became part of this project through some scope creep. Because we are now turning this into a stadium project, not just. Field and track project. And I think I think that's the important part here. That this had changed. Now, it's all being done within the contingency. Right? So again. I think we need, at least I need to spend a little more time when my project comes to us. And it's got a contingency in there, we're going to find out what would trigger the use of that contingency. And and if we know going in that there may be, if there's available money. There's some scope creep.
Yeah, so I mean, contingency in my mind should be unforeseen necessity versus intense. And and all of this is logical and I'm going to go for it because it makes sense at this point in time, but.
Is there bottled aspirin in the bud?
Especially going into budgets, you know, all this is going to do is raise my level of angst.
Or inquisitiveness about some of these details. Okay, there is a motion on the on the on the table. Let me try your minds, select woman. Those in the room, all in favor? Item five dot five, discuss and take possible action on change order number one, revision three for the Lakes HVAC project.
So this change order comes out of the Guilford Lakes HVAC project, which again, that project. Has had some timing issues, so the original. Project was going to have the boilers. As well as the condensing units, as well as the cooling tower, all done as a single phase. Due to issues getting materials. The boilers and the cooling tower will not be done until the summer. Twenty twenty two, you know, the cooling tower will probably be done in the spring prior to the summer of twenty twenty two, so it's back online. But it could not get done at this point in time. Because of these. Timing issues, we ran into. Some. Field conditions. That did not allow us to install two. Condensing units originally where we had proposed to put them. They would end up being too close to the cooling tower, which is not being replaced until next summer or next spring. So instead, in order to keep moving forward, now those two condensing units will run. On and off throughout the year, depending as needed, they supply fresh air and air conditioning to the four. Air handlers in the school. So we moved those around the corner to an open area versus tucking them in where they were originally proposed to go. So this way, when we replace the cooling tower. There won't be any concerns about damaging the new pieces of equipment and it gives, you know, the proper amount of space between all the equipment. So this is thoroughly reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. They had asked me the same questions that you've been asking on other projects is, you know, why wasn't this, you know, caught during the design phase? Again, during the design phase, all the equipment was being replaced. Therefore, there was no field condition that was unacceptable. But because now that we're not doing it, all the equipment at the same time, I cannot put in. Condensing units on top of my cooling tower. So therefore, that created this change order. So that was reviewed and approved by the Standing Building Committee to award the work. In the amount of twenty nine thousand to Action Air.
Is there a motion? Second. Any questions or comments?
Just curiosity, because I know by there a lot of these, these two concrete pads with the boxes of equipment on them. One's outside of the gym, the others, I guess, on the south end of the building.
That's two out, that's two out of the four, yes, there's two more that are in where our loading area is. We have an oil tank and stuff over in there, there's two more, that's where the issue occurred.
Any other questions? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Five dot six, and that is consider take possible action on change order for the ball and HVAC project. Is there a motion? In a second, second, this, this is a similar conversation to the. Item one on the commissioning, right?
Yeah, absolutely is. This is just for the additional work that Save More will have to do working with the commissioning agent. To go through, as we discussed. The project both phase one and phase two, so again, reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. Recommended move forward the amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred. Excuse me, twenty seven thousand two hundred fifty nine dollars and seventy four cents.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions?
Cliff, was my understanding that some issues had popped up that kind of precipitated the need for these. This commissioning. Third party situation, that anything we need to be enlightened on or that under control at this point?
So we are having issues with two air handlers presently not performing to specifications or or. Not to the required need of the 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 school. The contractor is stating that the issue is caused by the size of the unit and the. Engineer is stating that it's a result of ducting issues. So we're hoping that the commissioning agent will be able to clarify the true cause of the problem. Once we know the true cause of the problems, we can turn around and either have one of the two. Correct it, so if it's an engineering problem or duck work problem, for example, then the. Contractor will hopefully be able to remove the duck work and fix that. If it's a sizing issue, then it goes back to the architect and engineering firm. To review their calculations, which they have thus far and they're standing by them. But, you know, go back and determine why. It's not performing, so we're hoping the commissioning agent will actually be able to put their, truly put their finger on what's causing the problem. So I actually reached out to, you know, Peter Barrett, Jeff DiNofrio and David DeMaio. We've all been in touch on this and they've been made aware of it. And we're just presently waiting for the commissioning. To move forward and finish and give us a report on what they feel the issue is.
Okay, I I'm assuming or comment and. Part of this discussion, I'm assuming with. The town attorney, et cetera, et cetera, is that. Whether it's the engineers or the architects or. Handle or company or whatever it is, will potentially some of this twenty seven thousand dollars be endured by their correction process?
Potentially some of this might be, again, keep in mind, if we're going to commission this. Regardless of whether or not we have problems, right, if we're commissioning this project, this cost would be the cost to do that commissioning. What we will, we want to make sure of is that the correction of the issue. Is paid for by. Whomever caused the issue itself, so if it's an engineering issue, then the engineer will have to step up to the plate. And pay to have it rectified if it is a more of a mechanical, physical issue. By the way, the equipment was installed or ducted, again, that would go back to Save More, the contractor to fix the issue, so.
There's no question in my mind that that is a given that whoever's problem is will fix it. The issue I have is this twenty seven thousand dollars that we're paying for commissioning. A portion of it is to resolve this issue, but it is also the part of this twenty seven thousand dollars. Commissioning the rest of the system, because you were explaining how this commissioning agent checks all these internal valves and. Things and stuff, is that what they're going to do is arrest this system also?
Correct, yes, the whole system, top to bottom, yes.
So there's a possibility we could, we could recoup a portion of this. And I will make sure that I have those conversations with town attorney. Alright, any other questions? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great morning.
Okay, item six, consider take possible action on noise control ordinance. Berets application for care fest taking place June eleventh, twenty twenty two at the Guilford Fairground. Is there a motion? This is. An event for the Paul Dossi Care Facilities, Inc. And I'm fully supportive of this.
I'm sorry, did we vote on this already? Why is this so familiar?
I think there was supposed to have been one in the fall. I don't know if that took place or not, I was on, the original scheduled date, I was going to be out of town anyway, but. I don't, I don't know, but look, this looks like another fundraising, so. They may well have moved the other one for weather conditions or something, I don't know, but. So is there a motion? Call a question, all in favor? Sessions, because I'm sorry, select one renters is to. Item seven, what is resignation? Yeah, there's always a backup here, right? You had those challenges sometimes. Also had, sometimes these things didn't work and had to give it to other people. Alright, seven dot one is. The device, the device. Seven dot one is act on resignation from Noel Patrick from the Human Rights Commission, I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret. Is there a second? And let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? All those in the room, all in favor? Item two, act on a resignation of Matt Healy from the Board of Fire Commissioners. I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret. Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? And those in the room? That motion carries. Act three, seven dot three is act on recommendation to appoint Catherine Adams to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Second, just one comment, Catherine, you may or may not remember, was. I say not frequent, but she came to this board a couple of times to discuss the safe Simon issue. Which seems so far in our rearview mirror right now, it hardly seems possible, but. Alright, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries, seven dot four. Act on recommendation to appoint Sarah Edmonds to the Human Services Council, is there anyone, anyone, is there a motion? And the second, second, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Seven dot five, act on a recommendation to move Jennifer Murphy from alternate to regular member on the Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for a term to expire. September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Is there a motion? Try your minds, select one, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries, seven dot six, act on a recommendation to appoint. Jerry Grießmann as an alternate to the Human Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, is there a motion? In the second, second, let me try my, select one, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries, seven dot seven, act on a recommendation to appoint Nick Hadley as an alternate to the Harbor Management Commission. To fill a vacancy for a term to expire July thirty first, twenty twenty two. And a second? And a second, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries, seven dot eight, act on a recommendation to appoint Dennis Cornelli. To the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire October sixteen, twenty twenty five, I'll make that motion, is there a second? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries. So that nine, act on a recommendation move Doug Clark from alternate to regular member on the Constitution Commission to fill a vacancy. For terms to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Is there a motion? Second, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Act on appointment of Cecile Kustal to the Sustainable Guilford Task Force. Is there a motion? And a second? Second, let me try my, select woman, Renner? Those are all in favor? Opposed, staying refuses, hearing none, motion carries.
I'd just like to make a comment, I, I review all of these applications. We certainly. Have a high level of professionalism. Volunteerism has always been a great hometown, but. Very remarkable, the professionals that have stepped up in recent work.
Charles, thank you for that comment, you know, as all, as all of us recognize, this town runs largely. On volunteer efforts, I think there's some forty three or forty four boards and commissions. Only three of which are elected by residents, so you're absolutely right. Yeah, so there is an awful lot of talent and a lot of very capable individuals. Thank, thank goodness that they're willing to share that expertise with us. Item eight, eight dot one is act on a request from the Guilford Community Fund to place its annual fundraising campaign. Signed on the southwest corner of the green, is there a motion? And a second, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? Motion carries, item nine, committee reports, anything on housing, Sandra?
No.
Nothing, nothing. Okay. Correspondence, and if they have any correspondence they want to share. Hearing none, let's move to eleven, old business. Anything on old business? Item twelve, we have some new business, there's something we need to add to the agenda and that is consider and take possible action to contract with the Strategic Safety Dynamics. Under the Sourcewell contract for the fire police department training. A second? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner? Those in the room, all in favor? With that. Deputy Chief or Assistant Chief, Mike Show is here. May recall, this, this was approved under this project, it's a fire training facility, it was approved at referendum last year. And recently made it through planning and zoning. And wetlands, so they're at the stage now where they're looking to go to contract.
Mike, what is your? Alright, so we're, honestly, we're at the final step, so we're looking to. Move forward for purchasing through a Sourcewell contract, someone to the engine that we purchased. With Drager or Strategic Safety Designs, it was a Drager, one of their factory representatives. So yeah, we're, we're at the point, we've been through this past week, we just finished with the structural engineer and the geologist. Through, well, it's not Silver Petroselli, but Michael Horton, who's their recommended person for structural. But, so everything in front of you is the proposal from Strategic Safety Dynamics. And then there's also the Sourcewell contract, contract number. And then there's also the Sourcewell contract, contract number and the expiration date of the contract and or, I don't know, if there's any questions on the project?
I'm only seeing this, is it Sourcewell back?
So, first one should be the quote. Yep, for a total of five, twenty-six, seven, thirty-two, oh, one. And then
Matt, I added it, I added it this morning before the meeting, so you may just have to refresh, go back out and then it should be there.
Of course, everybody else has it. All right, the amount is how much?
The amount is five, twenty-six, seven, thirty-two, oh, one.
Is there a motion? Oh, I'll make one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, comments or questions? Mike, is this the totality of the cost for this project?
So, yes, so there's been three, three, three invoices so far, and it is, the construction part was the outlier in there. And we had to wait for the, the information to come back from the construction, which had required this structural engineer to approve. And yes, should be the totality of the project, because we're, we're budgeted five, five, thirty-seven, oh, thirty-five. And so, there is a, there's a little window in the event that we, we, the contingency that we run into something. And, you know, once the construction happens and everything's set, it's about a six months, four to six months. So, the, one of the, one of the big pushes for this was the ability for it to be modular accessory structure in the event that we ever had to move it or potentially, you know, we wanted to relocate it or expand it, contract it, the ability for it to be modular with one of the selling points to this structure itself. It will take about four to six months to be built. It gets built out in Pennsylvania. The other big move forward too is November, they warned us that with everything else, there's going to be price increases, so commodities are very challenging right now. So, you know, there was, oh, well, eight to ten percent, we don't know what the number is, but so we're right at that point where we're, you know, probably good six to nine months into this and getting it, you know, getting it all together and having a plan, approvals of all the, all boards and commissions. And we're at the point now to hopefully move forward and then start the pre-build meeting and constructing, you know, the contractual construction of the containers and the training facility.
Right, so, so it sounds as if there is not much of a contingency here, since we already have a contractor, detail contractor, we got, so a thousand dollars maybe, you know, there's a contingency. So, let me ask a question. What, what might trigger the use of some of the
The, the only contingencies are the outliers still out there, and the event that during the construction phase, if we have to modify the actual, you know, like a step or something, you know, within that, all the structural engineering and the design or the tubes and piers that everything's sitting on is there, but the event that anything potentially has to, you know, a stair, there's too much elevation in the final process or surface, anything, any of that surface here, I really don't expect, I honestly don't expect much, I'm going to knock on wood, but this is pretty much all-inclusive, and that's the goal was the, with the Sourcewell contract, that everything is, we're in a consortium contract with them and with the vendor protects us.
Good question. So, explain the fact that this quote is from July twenty-third, these numbers are still solid?
Correct, yeah, the update, they sent me an updated quote this past week, they couldn't send me the quote till they had the updated, but they didn't update the date, and I'm thinking was the timeline, but they just updated this quote last week. Once we had the firm cost on construction and the structural engineer design done.
Physically, where is this going?
It's going to be up, up in the north parking lot, between the animal shelter and the fire department. Normally, usually, once, one to two months out of the year, we put our mobile burn trailer there. You may have seen it there, it's that big red trailer, but in, within the parking lot, within the complex of police and fire.
So, that was, I had a question related to what Lou just asked. This is not the project that
Yeah, you're right.
That, that, the other project that was talked about that last year's budget cycle, about another building that police and fire might share for storage, et cetera.
Correct, that's not this project, that's public safety, that's a PDFB storage building. This is just the training building itself, the location will be in the designated area that we already use for training in that north
And what are the actual dimensions? I just
So, the dimensions, it's, the best way, it's like, almost like shipping, it is shipping containers, like forty, forty feet long by, there's two eight footers, so sixteen by forty, and then there'll be stairways outside. So, just about, I would say, you know, sixteen by forty is the primary footprint within the, within the structure.
You might, I, I know you just pointed out that the date, it's been refreshed, but it also says quote expiration eight, twenty-three, twenty-one, so maybe somewhere they can fix the date.
Just when we move through, so purchasing with Mary Jane, we'll make sure we have an updated quote to reflect that within that, so meets the parameters of sixty days of any changes.
We believe you.
I have a general question. Is, does the standing building committee have any oversight over this project?
Yes, it's actually, that's where we started. We started with standing building to get a good direction in there. Everything that we submitted from the beginning is exactly as it's moving forward. So, standing committee, committee, the standing building committee did approve it and did review all the, the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Just a comment, the company, the company standard safety dynamics is from my hometown.
Well, I guess we know which way you're going. Okay, any other? Let me try your minds, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Mike, thank you very much, and for your patience to speak through this morning.
Thanks a lot.
We have an item that is going to require executive session on land acquisitions, but prior to that, I'll open it up to public forum. Is there anyone who should still address the board in public forum? Come on up, sir, and just pour it into the table, name an address for the record and share with us what you'd like to share.
George Mack, I'm a captain. I've lived in Guilford for over fifty years. I was a high school teacher for thirty-six, a college professor, and I'm also an attorney. After remaining silent for many months, I now find it necessary to stand up and address this board, and especially you, Mr. Howie. Your candidate profile describes those who disagree with you as extremists.
Excuse me, sir. This is not board of selectmen actions. You want to address the board about board of selectmen decision-making, you're free to do so. This is not a forum for political campaigning. So, sir, if your remarks are not about something this board would act on or consider, you are not, you're not welcome to use this forum for politicization of this issue.
I'm not permitted to disagree with you on your public comments, sir.
Not at this meeting, this is a board of selectmen. When would it be appropriate?
When would it be appropriate to
It can reach out to me at any time. Let's go, Brandon.
Anybody else wishing to address the board in public forum? Is there a motion to go into executive session, and invite Keith, Kevin, and Gary into executive session?
Keith, Peter.
Peter as well, Peter Barrett. Let me try your minds, select woman Renner. Those in the room, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. All right, is there a motion to come on?
Some motion.
Second. Try your minds, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. For the record, there were no motions made, no actions taken in executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some motion.
In a second, let me try your minds, all in favor, select woman Renner.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you all.
Thanks.